I'm going to call this April Fool's Day meeting to order. Hopefully, Mr. Anderson will write what we say and not what he thinks he said. This is the first meeting for our new city clerk, Wendy Dickerson. So if everybody can be polite to her for a little bit of a break in. Madam Clerk, please call Rome.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember John Mina.
Here.
Councilmember Casey Middleworth.
Here.
Councilmember Derek Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Turk Wessie.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Shaw.
Here.
Now, if the clerk would please call. Provided invocation, we'll call it a pledge. Bring them to the stand.
Dear heavenly Father, I thank you for many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. I thank you for this day together and for the leaders of this city to meet. And thank you for guiding them and giving them wisdom in all their decisions. In thy name, your son, Jesus Christ, amen.
So we pray what?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose majesty is the law.
All right, next we're going to take a motion approval of amendments. There shows amendments for a March 28 work session, but that was canceled. And obviously, this agenda was put together prior to Thursday. So with that said, I'll take a motion.
President Lou, for approval of the March 18 regular meeting amendments without review.
Second.
A motion in second. Any questions or comments? I'll prepare to say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Baker, we have a couple of proclamations.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. Our first proclamation, I'd like to ask retired U.S. Army First Sergeant Kenneth Passler, who stepped up and is representing the Parental Alienation Prevention Week. I welcome our city attorney to read that proclamation at this time.
Whereas strong family relationships constitute the foundation of our community, whereas alienating behaviors are frequently seen in high conflict divorces, separations, and symmetrical custody arrangements, but can occur in intact marriages. And whereas parental alienation is a term used to describe any number of behaviors and attitudes on the part of one parent, both parents, or third party designated to interfere, damage, or destroy the relationship a child has with the other parent, is a form of abuse that causes emotional trauma to children. Whereas parental alienation deprives children of their right to freely love and be loved by both parents, their extended families, and robs children of their sense of security. Whereas we encourage all Alabamians to visit eawareness.com for information on raising awareness to stop parental alienation. We call on community and state leaders to support shared parenting because of its benefits for children. Whereas the recently published Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders, CSN V, made several references to the dysfunctional family dynamic. Alienation can be a form of psychological child abuse. Whereas approximately 40,000 Alabama children a year experience four-word visitation with one parent for only two to six days a month. Whereas Parental Alienation Prevention Week is intended to increase the knowledge and understanding of this problem, help Alabamians, institutions, legal and mental health community leaders to better identify and combat this abusive behavior to children. Whereas God so loves us, we also ought to love one another. Love does no harm to its neighbor. Therefore, children should be able to freely express the meaning of family. Father and mother, I love you. Whereas in honor of Parental Alienation Prevention Week, come and show your support by taking 10 minutes out of your day at noon Wednesday on April 25th to blow soap bubbles for love. Each bubble we blow represents the love our children have and should be allowed to share with both their parents without fear of guilt. Therefore, I Frank Morcato, Mayor of the City of Hoover, do hereby proclaim April 21st through April 27, 2019, as Parental Alienation Prevention Week, and April 25, 2018, as Parental Alienation Awareness and Bubbles for Love Day.
Mayor, the city council, the citizens of Hoover, thank you for giving me an opportunity to share a couple of words with you. As mentioned, I spent about 21 and a half years in the United States Army. And I've spent the last 10 years trying to address this issue in Alabama, which is approximately 40,000 kids is alienated from one parent. The last 10 years, there's nothing to pair it to. One of my 21 and a half years in military did nothing to pair it to this battle on our home front. Family is very important. Family is the foundation of any civilized society. But can you imagine having 40,000 kids each year that lose a parent due to death? Now, can you imagine approximately 40,000 kids each year lose a parent, but the parent is still living? They have to suppress that natural love and what we stand in our correction facilities and our streets. As I watched the news tonight, someone's going to be shot, killed, murdered. All these have one thing in common. That individual grew up and had a dysfunction in the household. They had to suppress their natural love. So here's good news. We're going to ask the mayor, the city council, our citizens, our schools, our churches, on April the 25th, stop what you're doing. It says at noon, but any time during the day, grab a bottle of soap bubbles and as you blow the bubbles, it flows freely. And that represents the love that kids naturally were born with, they desire to have with both parents. It will not change their situation at home, but what it will, it will send a very powerful message for the city of Hoover. So when that child had a bad day at home, they cannot express their love for both parents. Instead of splitting their wrists, instead of seeking drugs, they have hope because they're saying, we have a mayor that cares about us. We have a city council members that care about us. We have our schools that care about us and our churches. So that's a challenge. So we take, blow your bubbles, take your picture, go ahead, do the hashtag, Bubbles for Love. And you would not believe the impact you will have for the next generation. Mayor, city council, citizens of Hoover, thank you for your time and may God continue to bless.
Thank you, Sergeant. Next, I'd like Hoover resident, Mr. Ed Stank, to come up here and proclaimation for National Donate Life Month.
By becoming an organ, eye, and tissue donor, one individual can save and heal the lives of more than 100 people. During National Donate Life Month, we honor the compassion and generosity of registered donors, donor families, and living donors, and recognize the commitment of researchers, innovators, champions, national partners, and medical professionals who work tirelessly to save and heal lives through transplantation. Whereas 115,000 Americans and 1,800 Alabamians are currently on the National Transplant Waiting List. Whereas another person is added to the waiting list every 10 minutes. On the average, 22 people die every day because the organs they need are not donated in time. Whereas the most effective way to address this health crisis is to educate and to encourage citizens to commit to the following actions. Register your decision to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor in the National Donate Life Registry. Register, registerme.org, or legacyofhope.org, or at your local DMV office to learn more about living donation. Whereas the mayor of Hoover feels that donate life, cause of saving and healing lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation is of such immediate and worthwhile importance, that now, therefore, I Frank Morcato, Mayor of the City of Hoover, Alabama, and on behalf of the City of Hoover, do hereby proclaim April as National Donate Life Month. In Hoover, Alabama, we honor all who have given the gift of life. We focus our efforts on the extreme need for organ and tissue donors, and we encourage residents to designate their donation decision and share the decision to donate to family members.
Mr. Mayor, city council, on behalf of Legacy of Hope Alabama, I thank you for this proclamation. For all those people who weren't there, for all of us volunteers who volunteer day after day, week after week, year after year, for all of the recipients of organ donation. Proclamation covered a great many facts that I had looked up and am prepared to share with you today, so they did my work for me, so I don't have to use my recall. I've been ambassador with Legacy of Hope for one year now. And I did so because I didn't have much affiliation with it. It's not a club that I ever wanted to join, but I too am a recipient. Just a little over three and a half years ago, I received a heart from a 19-year-old boy. He registered when he was 16 at the DMV. And he said to his mother, I want to register. She asked him why. He said, jeez, I don't need them one day. I want someone else to be able to use them. I can't imagine that at 16 years of age, he would have thought that only three years later, he'd be giving his life to someone else. He saved me, and he saved three other people. Had it not been for him, I would not have had another month left. That's how close it was. And my history's long. My heart disease goes all the way back to when I was just a child, teenager, and I've gone through all the steps. But being part of this organization, club I had never imagined being part of, I have met incredible people. And I have met so many other recipients and heard so many incredible stories. And I go out and I share awareness. And I ask people questions. And great many are registered donors, great many are not. Politely, I ask them if they would share with me why they're not registered. Some people just don't get around to it. Other people have concerns. And I do everything I can to answer those concerns. They're all myths. I understand their concerns, I really do, but they're all myths. And if you go to legacyofhope.org, you can get a lot of questions answered. If not, you can always call and ask them, and they will answer the questions. Can we imagine how many people die every year? And if every single person was a registered donor, how that would deplete the list that are still waiting? 20 people die every single day waiting on a list. They'll never get that organ. Alabama, right now, there's 1,600 people on the list. So far this year, 38 people have been transplanted. That's it. So I hope that everyone here is registered. If you're not, if you have any questions, call us, ask us. We'll answer them. If it's just a matter of getting to it, then it only takes less than three minutes, literally less than three minutes, to sign up. And it is a legacy that I hope to leave behind, just like my donor did. His name is Weston. Great kid. I've met his family. I've met his high school friends. He's from southern Alabama. He's part of my life today. And my mantra today is that together he and I through God. I couldn't do it without him. He can't do it without me. And this is what God has made possible for us both. It's through his charity, his generosity. And I cannot imagine any legacy, all the money in the world, all the houses and the cars, no legacy is greater than one of new life. So once again, Mr. Mayor, city council, citizens of Hoover, I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would like to recognize State Representative Dave Wheeler here in the audience. I appreciate you coming and joining our council meetings here quite a bit, as a matter of fact. And we appreciate that you're able to hear firsthand some of the things that are great things going on in Hoover. Certainly appreciate all your help in the legislation as well.
I need to talk to you about a few bills. Quick mention of housekeeping. At the completion of this meeting, Mr. Green is going to be chairing a public works committee meeting. And I have a couple of pretty important discussions. Onto our action items, Resolution 5966-19, Mr. Corley.
This resolution amends the budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2019, to provide for the items set forth on the Exhibit A.
Do you approve Resolution 5966-19? Second.
The motion in the second. Dr. Lopez, how are you, ma'am?
Good, thank you. Good evening.
I wish I brought was still here, right?
Of course. As you will see on your Exhibit A, there are nine items related to this amendment. First item is basically just reallocating. There was some extra money in one capital asset and reallocating it to another for fleet. Items two through six are basically budgeting some funds that are limited to what you can spend on. Most of those are for the police department. And so they're basically just budgeting revenues we've received over the years so that they can spend those, for the most part, small dollar items. In addition, the last item, six there, they are budgeting $25,000 out of the state drug fund for an imaging scanner for the CSI unit. Item seven is $17,000 related to a public safety sound system out of the Met complex. Item eight is $145,000 related to shadow conduit and fiber connectivity. This was related to the partnership with the MCI Metro of Verizon. You may remember a couple of months ago, we did that franchise agreement and to allow us to take advantage of their work and their labor. And this will allow us basically to fund part of what they are doing. Item nine is a reallocation. It's basically related to a grant for the library. And they're just reallocating what they're spending it on and switching around some other funds. They're basically, instead of doing the RFID disorder, they're doing book drops because they know they can get the book drops spent in time, and then the other money will still be funded as well. So it's just kind of switching some money around.
Any questions for Dr. Lopez?
Mr. President, oh, no. Only two capital project fund, item seven, eight. Are those budgeted items from last year? Obviously, eight is a budgeted item, or is that a new item?
It's a new item.
And in regard to eight, that's coming out of the 2.4 unencumbered that we have currently.
Yes, it's coming out of the unencumbered, and it's probably closer to $3.80.
Okay. Do we have a, do we have an estimate on, this is one phase of that project. Do we have an estimate on what that project's going to cost for the duration?
We do have, basically, the way this word Verizon submitted phases, I think, one through six, one through seven, phases one through seven. And they are moving pretty quickly. They anticipate, I think, phases one through three at least being done by September 30th, subsequent phases early sometime next fiscal year. Their total, the total cost for, if we wanted to do everything, which we would not, but their total cost for everything is right at $800,000 that we would owe or we would pay if we did everything. However, that's about 20% of what the total cost would have been if we did it on our own. So they did provide that and that phasing.
Okay. So this would get us through Phase One?
This, well, this basically gets us through, this basically allows us to do the portion that would, all the conduit related to PSC, Public Safety Center, to City Hall.
Okay.
It's different phases and those early phases, but that's basically what it would find.
Okay. Thank you.
Doctor, there's eight phases between Public Safety Center and City Hall?
No, there's seven phases for the whole city of where they're going.
Okay. That would also include Met Complex?
The Met is not in this budget amendment, but it's in those early, those phases.
It's in, it's in that overall.
That is correct.
Just for comfort, Will. I'll hold that until another time. Any other questions for Dr. Lopez? Anything from the audience? Have a motion in the second? I'll, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Corley, Resolution 5967-19.
Invitations to bid for point-of-sale system and accessory software and service model were sent to six vendors listed on the City of Hoover vendor list and also posted on the City of Hoover website. Bids were open on Thursday, March 27, 2019. One bid was received for Bypass Mobile LLC, the amount of $71,619 of that law specifications and requirements. Bid is accepted. The mayor's authorized the executing agreement with the vendor for the services to be performed.
Do you approve Resolution 5967-19? Second.
Motion in the second. Mr. Corley, you said that only one vendor?
Yes, sir.
So this is not going to be a negotiation, not to succeed?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Yes, sir. That's correct. We are recommending that we go ahead and award the bid. We did receive a second bid. It did not qualify. It came late. It did not meet the specifications, and it was higher than this bid. But it, because it didn't really meet the specifications, we had disqualified it. But in this particular case, what we're looking at is a real-time crunch to get this system delivered, installed, configured, tested, and accepted before the, this year's SEC baseball tournament. So we're asking that we, we feel comfortable with the pricing, that we would ask that you approve this bid so we can move forward with the acquisition as quickly as possible.
Does the city currently own point-of-sale systems at the Infinity Center and Complex right now?
There is a point-of-sale system that's out there. I'm not that familiar with it.
Mr. Sparks, do you know, does SFM buy the point-of-sale system that's currently in place at the center?
Do you know the part of the Zoom election project?
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Power? Anything from the audience? Seeing, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Resolution 5968-19, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the mayor, Morcato, to execute a technical services and support agreement with EBIC Inc. regarding an upgradeable risk management software.
President, I move for approval of Resolution 5968. Thank you. Second.
Motion in the second. Dr. Lopez.
Still doing pretty good. This item is, will be an upgrade for the risk management software. You may remember a couple of years ago, we had gone one route, and we decided that wasn't the best route. So what we're doing is this is an upgrade with actually the existing vendor, and the funding is already budgeted.
Any questions for Dr. Lopez? Anything from the audience? Seeing, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Next, we have Resolution 5969-19, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes a payroll checking panel.
Second. Do you approve Resolution 5969-19? Second.
Motion in the second. Mr. Yeager, how little needs?
This is just opening the new account of regions to facilitate the process if we go down the automation of our payroll system. It will allow for easier transfer of funds from our general account into our payroll account.
How's that going to work now that we're using or outsourcing to transfer a set amount of money at a pay period?
But I'd choose to have room that I did up what that number is going to be, or transfer it and then draw it out. I want to put this file on, and we'll obviously make sure this is up.
Got to hand up all of the federal taxes and everything?
Taxes.
It's almost like you're ready to retire.
No, no.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Yeager? Anything from the audience? Seeing, hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. The ayes have it. Resolution 5970-19.
This resolution amends the 2018 salary scale compensation structure adopted from September 17, 2018. Our Resolution 58-59-18 reflect an increase for pay grade 11.
Do you approve Resolution 5970-19? Second.
No motion in the second. Mr. Lewis.
Sir, thank you. Yes, Mr. Corley alluded to, what we're requesting is a 5% adjustment for pay grade 11 only on the pay scale that was adopted last October, September. This request is born out of the appeal process from the Gallagher site. Specifically, we had a group appeal from all the police who expressed concern with the fact that the pay scale is as stands currently. A sergeant, who is a non-exempt position, maximizes overtime and end up with a higher retirement benefit than a lieutenant who's exempt and not eligible for overtime. So what this 5% adjustment does, and is one of their suggestions, is closes that gap. We felt, we looked at it, and certainly felt like it would be a disservice to the lieutenants to keep things maintained as they currently are. And then, because it was adopted, the house process felt it was appropriate to bring it back.
Instead of step increases in grade, grade 11 will go to grade 12?
No, sir. Grade 11 will just adjust upward by 5%. One of the good things, it's an usual thing, but about our new pay scale, is that there is a, there's not a set percentage between the pay grades, which affords us the flexibility to address a situation like this without upsetting the entire pay scale.
The memo that we have, Mr. Lewis, says that you're going from grade 11 to grade 12. One is provided by Mr. Wright.
If, I see what you're referring to. What it was, the police lieutenants proposed two options. One being the, and this is directly from their appeal.
Right.
One being.
The rise is, you know, to counsel was grading puts out stepping.
It's two options.
Right here.
The appeal proposes two options.
So we're going.
That's a little too neat for Mr. Lewis, which is that I want to rock.
I see. Okay. I see. And how is it he came to choose 5% rather than grading?
A few reasons. Number one is that the market pay from salary studies actually showing that salaries competitiveness is, and this would definitely be an increase by 5%. So it wasn't market pay to support going up to the pay grade 12. The other issue is that by maintaining grade 11 and just increasing it, it allows us to keep that congruity between the police and fire department structures. As you may be familiar with, the ranks are all even on the pay scale. And this would allow us to keep that intact, as well as wholesale move, you know, these jobs would move together based on scope and responsibility that are, that would be a similar nature.
For the percentage of increase speed, it was a grade adjustment.
That would be about a little over 10% between grades 11 and 12. That would be about a little over ten percent, uh, between grades eleven and twelve.
I don't see anybody here that would qualify to speak, although I have. Uh, those that appealed, I guess. Is there someone in the present, we could choose as lieutenant? Would you dare to dispute?
Yes.
Retired, sitting anyway. Easy one to pick on.
I'm Lieutenant Fountain, Police Department. When we did the pay appeal, uh, we based it on the salaries for yes, the sergeants. And the sergeants were, um, basically, they were eclipsing. They were making more than we were in retirement based on current salary with a twenty percent overtime. That's just twenty percent accounts for retirement. The fact is, they're hourly, they actually make more than we can, uh, provided they worked overtime. So, um, the way that we did it, we were hoping for option twelve. Because what that does is that puts us more in line with exempt employees of the captain's level. That still leaves a seven, uh, I wrote it down a second ago, give me a second. I wasn't prepared to come up here to talk. It still leaves a seventeen thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollar gap between us and the captain's level, both being exempt. Either one of us can make overtime. Uh, and that, what that does, that increases the, uh, potential for a sergeant who's making overtime plus twenty percent their cap to a gap of seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. So that increases that gap between us and the sergeant. It narrows the gap between us and the captain a little bit. That gap between us and the captain will never change because we're all exempt with salary. It does put a seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollar gap, two hundred and thirty-five dollar, ninety-nine cent gap between us and sergeant with twenty percent retirement. Again, they can make more than we can provided they work overtime. Now, they're working it, or not, but unless it's, we are working it, we're just not getting paid for it. That prime example of the protest, where we're all out there for a lot of hours during the protest.
Yeah, I understand that y'all helped in coming up with these two solutions.
Yes, sir. All, all twelve of us were participating, participating in the appeal process.
Did y'all give a preference to the administration, which one y'all lean towards and why?
We would prefer the twelve. Yeah, but I wanna make sure everybody knows that we're very grateful for what we have. We're not, we're very grateful for what you guys are doing. At least listening to us, give us something to step forward and go through the process.
How much would a grade increase, would it be a ten percent increase?
I do not understand that number. Let's see, grade increases. The police officer between the old salary and the new salary was a step increase, eleven point two eight percent. The police sergeant under the old pay scale and the new pay scale is eleven point five four percent. The police lieutenant under the old scale to the current scale was only four point six. So going up to twelve would put it in more in line with the other step increases of, of the other people.
What is the will of counsel?
President, I'd be curious as to why the administration hasn't recommended twelve as opposed to?
Mr. President?
I think that, um, you know, the lieutenants gave us two good ideas in their group appeal and we weighed both of them. And what we realized is that one of the elements of analysis that Gallagher or any, uh, similar type firm would do on a study of this nature is internal equity of other jobs in the system. So if we, and Mr. Lewis mentioned if we take police lieutenants and move them out of eleven and move them to twelve, we've broken that consistency that has existed as far back as any of us are aware between our two public safety departments. I think we will almost definitely trigger an appeal from our eleven or twelve fire captains that we have. We have about twelve fire captains, chief. So I think we'll see another group appeal from them. And then I think we'll see an appeal from the systems administrators, parking reg superintendents, and every other employee group that's positioned on eleven. So if we follow this train of logic, we will vacate pay grade eleven, we'll move everybody up to a twelve, including a bunch of people that didn't originally appeal. We thought that their second option was a good balanced point to identify, that I think they identified a very valid flaw in the system as currently adopted. Felt like it fixed that problem, got people interested again in promoting to lieutenant, which understandably has been an issue in the police department. When you can make more as a sergeant, retire with a higher pension as a sergeant, why would you take on additional responsibility, liability, those kind of things? We think it fixes that and it addresses it uniformly for pay grade eleven without triggering a cascading set of future appeals from probably, I'm estimating fifteen to twenty additional employees. Well, more than that, probably, probably twenty-five additional employees.
Mr. President, if I could ask you a couple of questions. Um, the first one would be, okay, we're looking at that disparity between lieutenant and captain. How often do these, in what frequency historically have these lieutenants gone to captain? Is it one every so many years or how often does that happen when you get to that next year and that next job?
Well, I think the issue's between sergeant and lieutenant. And we have twelve lieutenant's positions and about twenty-four, about back to?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five sergeants, so you deal with it more directly than I do. How often do you promote a sergeant to lieutenant, every two or three years maybe?
Yes, sir. None vacancies or retired.
Right. So as needed, there's no?
As needed, there's no.
Baseline?
Right.
Okay. And then also, if we looked at five, did we look at, say, seven or nine to try to, you know, talk about the top out pay by maybe a seven percent, maybe a nine percent to get a little bit closer to that next, so you can talk about captain for that area?
We, we did not. We looked at the number that would do two things. One would be to correct the problem that was identified. And the second issue was to leave space between lieutenant and captain because if we are, if we go too far up in between, um, eleven and twelve and approaching thirteen, which is police captain, now we maybe have just kicked the can down the road and we've created a distance in it, but then want to promote to captain.
So probably it's a good mid-range?
We felt like it was. It's recommendations, so it can certainly be adjusted. We thought there was rationale for that.
Okay.
Most importantly, we thought it hit the mark, which was to correct the situation that was the subject of the appeal.
Right.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the adjustment, if we go with option one to top out pay by five percent, that just equated the lieutenants, or they equated all of pay grade eleven?
It is all of pay grade eleven. And it would, it would adjust the entire grade, so all thirteen steps in grade eleven would move up by five percent?
So everyone included pay grade eleven would get?
Yes, regardless of where they're currently placed.
What's the numbers for the budget?
I think, we're working on that estimate, and I think it's gonna come in between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm surprised by moving up one step, we're still gonna have only thirteen steps, we're just gonna finish in four years.
No, sir. We won't affect.
No, sir, there now.
We won't affect the, the horizontal axis. This moves the grade up on the vertical axis by five percent. Thirteen steps remains intact for the entire pay plan. This takes all of pay grade eleven and just slides it vertically up by five percent for the entire pay grade. Yes.
Chief Bentley, you heard anything from your captains that they wish they'd appeal that the police lieutenants had?
The captains, fire captains are the same as, are there, there's things on fire. Fire captains. Right. So, so cabinets don't have any issue. Hanging on for the ride.
And I think the difference there, Mr. President, is that the, it, it goes to what Lieutenant Fountain mentioned, is it goes to the opportunity for overtime for police sergeants, just by the nature of the two departments, the way they operate. I think fire lieutenants are eligible for some overtime, but I doubt that they approach the amount, uh, that would place them that close to a fire captain's final pay.
Any other questions from the council? Any from the audience? Adam Clark, please call the role.
Mr. Green?
Hi.
Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Doctor Naylor?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Fezey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. This morning, each of the members will be able to go on record and place a duty, a severance. Next?
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Yes, sir. Uh, next, Resolution fifty-nine seventy-one nineteen. Mr. Corley?
This resolution declares city owned items listed for the resolution as surplus and authorizes these items to be disposed of by sale as is at public auction or disposed of by donation.
President, I move for approval of Resolution fifty-nine seventy-one nineteen.
Second.
Motion in the second. Powell? Selling anything good?
Yes, sir. Unfortunately not. Uh, what, what you have is a couple of salvage vehicles that have completely totaled. Um, our risk management department is, um, seeking ways to get these disposed of. We have before use two, two totaled vehicles. We'll get salvage titles.
Any questions for Mr. Powell? Any from the audience? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Item twelve is an ABC application, uh, restaurant, retail, liquor, rainbow crown, Inc., business as in Ann Garden, eighteen fifty-one, Montgomery Highway, Suite one oh one, Hoover Street, five two four four. Tell some old Phillips stories. And this, uh, Mr. Shaw?
Mr. President, I move for approval of the ABC application.
Second.
You have a motion in the second. Any comments, questions from council? Any from the audience? All in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. Next, we're gonna have a first reading of order, ordinance nineteen dash two four two three. And then I believe the mayor, Mr. Rice, may want to speak as may others.
This ordinance authorizes the donation of one point nine eight acres of unneeded municipal real property as shown on Exhibit A of the ordinance to Jefferson State Community College. Jeff State has agreed to make certain improvements to city property in the area of the donated land in exchange for legal titles of real property as shown on Exhibit B of the ordinance. This ordinance establishes and declares that the property is not currently needed and will not be needed for public or municipal purposes. This ordinance furtherized, farther authorizes the mayor and city authorities to a deed in real estate agreement with Jeff State substantially before the fact, as Exhibit C indeed of the ordinance. Session reading in consideration for adoption on Monday, November fifteenth, two thousand and one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Allow me to introduce some of our good friends from Shelby County. President Brown, Keith Brown from Jefferson State Community College, Alex Duchok, our county manager, Bill Connor, who is the current president of Shelby, the Shelby County Chamber, Joe Mees, everybody knows Joe from Sam and Associates, but also our past president from, uh, the Shelby County Chamber, Kurt Manser. Kurt is the CEO of, uh, the Shelby County Chamber. Gwen Robinson is also with Jefferson State Community College. And Yvonne Murray with Fifty-Eight Inc., she's the managing director. And we're excited about this little project. We've been talking with, uh, President Brown for quite a while on, uh, on this property located on, uh, the Jefferson State College, uh, Junior College. We're proud to have that institution in our city and it's a, it's a great add. And we've had many, uh, uh, opportunities to work with, uh, the president, Ed Jefferson State, and also our partners at Fifty-Eight Inc. and of course the commission and, uh, as well as, uh, um, others down, down near the chamber as well. So, uh, tonight, we, uh, would like for, uh, President Brown to come down and Alex Duchok. Uh, this is an opportunity for us again to partner with them. It's gonna not only help our city, but it's gonna be something that will help our school system as well. And, uh, Alan, maybe you'll come up and explain the details on it, that I certainly want to give y'all an opportunity to speak about it as well. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. President, your packet, page, uh, four, for the page, following page four, you have a plat that shows the proposed subdivision of the land to be done in. Mr. Corley mentions just, just under two acres. Uh, the structures that you see there on the plat in the back corner of that piece of property are the existing greenhouse that we, I guess, inherited in our purchase of the Spain Park property from the city of Birmingham many, many years ago. This will be the approximately two acres immediately adjacent to that. Currently, we have a little bit of kind of lay-down type activities there, materials and things like that. We have another place to put that. There are two features, um, that we need to mention about this particular place. So one is that the running track that, you know, winds around, uh, Veterans Park and also part of the college campus does cut through a portion of that. We don't think that that'll be disturbed at this point in time, if it is, by the construction activities. Uh, Jeff State has indicated willingness to help relocate that little piece of the drive. We don't think that's gonna be necessary. We also found out, uh, that our police department has their, uh, pre-employment physical fitness course located there. We also think that will remain undisturbed. Think those are far enough to the periphery of the property, uh, that the building that they need to build pointed pitch on those. So this will be used for welding, uh, career technical program that Mr. Brown might speak more about. Um, there's already been robust conversation, I know, between Jeff State and Hoover City Schools and RC Three, which will also have a welding component to their building trade program. And there's been discussion about sharing curriculum and, and resources and instructors to create a seamless pipeline for our young people who enter into that very lucrative job field to be able to get their start at RC Three and then move to Jefferson State's program. So with that, any questions?
The police agility will be able to stay where it is?
We think so.
And will that be then on Jefferson State property?
It would and we'll work out the, the details of use of that. And if it has to be relocated, our first, uh, conversation would be with Jeff State to see if we can find another place there on the campus. If not?
They want some sort of liability release? Anybody?
Right. And I should also mention, Mr. Smith, that on the very back page of your agenda item, you have an aerial and you'll see some cross-tatch area. And as part of this, Jeff State has very graciously agreed to provide some paving and parking improvements that will be done in conjunction with their construction. Uh, the mayor has directed us to look into some work that needs to happen at the greenhouse complex. Uh, we, we do actively use it, our horticulturists use it every day, but it probably right now doesn't represent the best of some of our Hoover facilities. We'd like to put a little bit better face on it. So Jeff State will help with that, with the, uh, road work and parking lot work, and then we'll follow up with some improvements to the structure itself.
Mr. President, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, if approved or donated, will construction be handled?
Well, let Mr. Brown address that, if that's okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I appreciate your consideration of this request. Our architect right now is already, uh, preparing the plans, so those will be submitted to ABC for approval. We anticipate, the, the variable there is how long the construction contract takes for that approval. It can take anywhere from sixty days to upwards of a hundred and eighty days. Our plan, though, we need to be in this facility if approved by the end of this calendar year. So it's, it's a short duration, it's about five thousand square feet, slab-on-grade, steel building, brick facade to match the existing building. We want to make it aesthetically pleasing. The duration's probably less than a hundred and twenty-day construction duration, but the, again, that variable is the approval. But we, because of some grant funds that we're using for the equipment purchase, uh, we need to be in this facility by the end of the calendar year. Uh, if we're complete by December thirty-first, obviously, we may not be able to start classes in that facility on January fourth when we come back after the holidays. So it may slip into the summer, uh, term before we actually are able to offer classes in this facility, if that gives you an idea of the timeframe. But we'll, our architects are already preparing the drawings right now, ready, ready for submission for approval.
I think this is a wonderful project. Anytime we can support some, some trades benefiting our city, wholeheartedly agree with that. I, I will tell you where my, where my hiccup is on this. And, uh, I, I, I don't know where I feel yet because I understand this property may not be needed for, for what I'm looking for, uh, but I'm in the firm belief that it's time for a, uh, library branch on that side of town. Therefore, I'm a little hesitant to give up any city property that we currently own that may- that may be situated for a secondary library branch. That's, those, those are just my thoughts right now.
And I appreciate that. I, I would say this is one point nine eight acres. I don't know, you know, I, I won't speak to the library branch and what that will house, what the one point nine acres will house, but five thousand square feet with ancillary parking is pretty much going to take care of all those two acres. So I appreciate that concern. Uh, I can tell you that this will provide a service to the residents of the city of Hoover, uh, the businesses of the city of Hoover, Shelby County. I think it's going to be a tremendous benefit to, to everyone concerned.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Is, will the one point nine acres, will the building consist of only, will it only be on the one point nine acres or will there extend to other areas?
Only on this parcel. So that's, we haven't finalized the exact location because we're waiting on this, that's the, you know, the actual property boundary. But again, it's about a five thousand square foot facility with ancillary parking around it. We're going to improve the access, change the grade. If you're familiar, that ramp kind of goes up on a sharp angle. We'll change the grade there, but together, all of it will be contained within this one point nine eight acres.
And the number of students predicted?
I can tell you this, our welding program has grown from nine students in two thousand fifteen, sixteen, to upwards of two hundred students in the last, that's three years. So, and Shelby County has, our city of Shelby Hoover Campus has our largest student population with forty-seven hundred fall students. We're going to have twenty welding stations in there because it's really all you can manage at one time in a classroom setting. As many times as we can duplicate those offerings, we're going to do that. We're hiring a full-time instructor dedicated to the Shelby Hoover Campus. I think easily, we're going to surpass over a hundred students, but limited just because of the twenty welding stations that are in there. If you get more than that, you need multiple instructors, and then you increase your costs from there, increase your square footage. I think we'll be able to meet the needs with the twenty welding stations. I'm excited about this project. This Shelby Hoover Campus is the only campus we have not been able to offer welding, and it's time to change that. I think it's time to help us meet the workforce development needs here in the city of Hoover, and this project's going to be fantastic to address that.
Thank you.
So you're stepping in offer welding at your other campuses?
We will, we will. So we have a twenty station at our Birmingham campus, fifteen stations at our St. Clair Bell City campus. I, the demand is just too great. I, I think in Fifty-eight Inc., Yvonne Murray's here. A survey that they did, welding was identified as the second highest-demand job in Shelby County. I think the demand's out there, and the student population's out there as well. The timing is fantastic with R.C. Three coming on with their welding, the dual enrollment opportunities, the traditional credit students, the non-credit training. That's going to happen for that worker who wants to move up and is, is ill set, increases skill sets. We're going to be able to address all of those needs there. So I think it's limitless in the number of students, except for the twenty stations, of course, at any given time.
I think I could say that eagerness is well suppressed.
We've been, we've been talking about this, and Mayor, thank you for your effort for better part of over a year now. So I've been excited about this. I, I think, I think it's time for our Shelby Hoover Campus to address some of the career technical education needs and, and workforce development needs here.
President, I support this project. I think it's a, a great thing. The thing we're going to get calls about is that, is the walking trail there. I mean, a lot of people use that trail every morning in their, yeah.
Well, it's funny enough, thirteen years ago, I stood here with Tommy Daniels, and we committed to preserving that walking trail. And I heard from the city, when we were renting that four-story building there, we made that commitment. We have lived up to that commitment. It's a certified track. We don't want to disturb that. I think everything's going to happen up on top of the hill. We're having our five K, by the way, on April twentieth. If you want to come out to our five K, the G.D. Merritt Memorial Five K will happen on that trail, on that same trail. I run on that trail from time to time. I can tell you, we're committed to make sure this-
That, that sounds good, because I know that's what a lot, most of the folks are going to be interested in. All the other cool stuff, though, they're going to, but it sounds like y'all are committed to that, so that's-
Absolutely. And again, Tommy can, can attest to that, that, that we have lived up to our commitment of May thirteen years ago when we rented that and, and designed that walking trail across our park. Thank you for that. Any other questions?
Just, just one commentary, retention rate. Job force, is that predominantly in the Birmingham Hoover MSA, or is it further out? I'm looking for, for retention on, when students come in, what are they going to work, are they going to stand the reason, or will they navigate to more areas?
The survey conducted by Fifty-eight Inc. was for Shelby County businesses. We also did an analysis of the Birmingham MSA. So they're going to work in, and most of our students live in Jefferson County. Most of our students actually go to the Shelby Hoover Campus, but they live in Jefferson County. A large, a, a good segment of the population lives here in Shelby, or in Shelby County, rather. I think they're going to work all over, and Yvonne can attest to this, that, that your survey went out all over Shelby County, but the demand, when you, when you talk about up into Jefferson County as well, it, it's going to be all over the, all over our service area, which includes all four counties.
We have Central Six, and we have Cat T. You're in a workforce development and workforce readiness area. That's about on the microphone.
Alex Duchok?
You got sixty thousand people watching.
Oh, that's perfect. Uh, we're excited about it. Some of you asked before I got here, Shelby County's into the project three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we're investing workforce readiness, workforce development funds for the need, in not only address what we see going to happen with the baby boomers exiting the welding job classifications, but from what we all understand, the next wave of jobs is, is not a demand of bachelor's degrees, and we have many job classifications that we look to Jeff State. We've got an initiative from our county, we're Lawson State. Lawson is not in Geoy County, but they're a regional player. We look to serve in higher region out of this area. We knew, we had a boy with the call of Fifty-eight, discovered with their Shelby County survey, that our leadership in the region on Cat T, on Central Six, sees the needs throughout the entire six county area. We've shared this with BBA, we've shared it with anybody that's in that spectrum. If you don't mind, Congressman President, I'll go ahead and touch this. We've appreciated all that we've partnered Shelby County has. I'm here on behalf of our county commission and our county management team. I shared with you that we're looking forward with Fifty-eight, the Shelby County Chamber, the secondary school systems, and the career tech programs. We all believe, and had you had the opportunity to hear your, and our city school superintendent, Kathy Murphy, when she spoke with the other superintendents from the four facilities, the four systems that have facilities in our county, that's yours, Shelby County, Palo and Alabaster, the emphasis was on just what they've been, and you've been investing in on the career tech side. So thumbs up on that. I wanted to tell you thank you. It's been over ten years since I've been in your city council chamber. And I, I was trying to think what the subject matter is, and I cannot remember it. I wanted to tell you thank you for your investment, your mayor, your police chief, and others in Compact Two Thousand Twenty. You'll be seeing a briefing on that come. Your talented staff member that you assigned from the, from the police force has been critical, and your public schools and our public schools making a difference there. So thank you. I wanted to tell you, I got word recently that our project is over a decade old, our joint project, Shelby County and the city of Hoover, which is on Inverness Parkway. This will be a trail connector from the nature park all the way to the intersection of Alavale Road, which will ultimately tie to get to Veterans Park that we jointly developed with y'all. And our restroom project's about to be finished. They're going through the pitching out stage there at Veterans Park. So that's another one. I'll close by this, because I may not be back for another ten years. We have a new project that we're talking about expanding with you, and that's the NCFI project at the Public Safety Center. We have an opportunity to educate additional national leaders, increasing the number of people staying in Shelby County Hoover lodging facilities, and taking educational programs on cyber, cybersecurity at that facility. So it's exceeding what we initially attempted to do. Your county, Shelby County, will invest money into making that reality when all that comes together. Mayor, Allen, and others, thank you.
Mr. Duchok, I understand, didn't Congress almost double the funding for that program?
Yeah, a lot. I, I probably need to cut my comments, because that's a presentation in itself. Yes, Senator Shelby and others have stepped up tremendously because of what this city did, Shelby County did, and the state DA's Association and others did when we pulled that off originally. So that's somebody else's, that one of the details, but it's phenomenal.
I know Senator Shelby fought greatly to keep the second facility, even the program moved to another state completely. I know the city of Hoover is where your pride is in Shelby County.
Right. It's been a win-win. That old Bell South warehouse has, has really changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Mr. President? Yes, sir. I don't know how everybody else feels, but this is a great project, and I sure would hate for them to have to wait a few more days to get adopted. If we could suspend the rules, we'd probably miss this evening.
Making motions to suspend the rules.
So lose her.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyte?
Aye.
Dr. Bellworts?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Fezey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
I don't want any one member of the council to have any misgivings going forward. So, for entertaining, uh, motion to adopt, if anyone has any concerns, that would be proper time.
Mr. President, I could, maybe if I have some opportunity to, to address Doctor Millbrook's question, I don't think that that two acres would be a buildable site for what we need to do for a satellite.
I don't either, I agree with you.
And I, and I know where you're headed, and I know we need to address that need, because there's a lot of dialogue out there about that specific need. There is a possibility for other city-owned property in that vicinity, but I just don't think this parcel would be what we could use to meet that need, if that helps. I know we didn't have a chance to dialogue on that previously, but that helps with your decision-making process. I don't think the branch would hinge on that.
I, I say it by my aye.
Yes, sir.
We just need to get Mr. Sander, big dirt mover, to pay the bill. All right. Open for a motion for the adoption of ordinance nineteen dash two-four-two-three.
Move for adoption of ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four-two-three.
Second.
Motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Lyte?
Aye.
Dr. Bellworts?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Fezey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Congratulations, it's done.
Mr. President, council, I'm, I'm blown away. This is a great project. I, I appreciate your support. I appreciate the partnership, Mayor Cato, Mr. Rice. And I also like to thank my friends in Shelby County Chamber for being here, showing the support from the business community as well. So thank you so much. It's going to be a great project. We're going to do a lot to address the economic and workforce development needs here in the city of Hoover.
Now you can finish doing the center.
That's right.
All right. Item fourteen, first reading of ordinance nineteen dash twenty-four, twenty-four, Mr. Troy.
This ordinance provides for the levying of municipal taxes to be assessed by the city and which shall go into force in effect as of October first, two thousand and nineteen. These taxes shall be collected as usual by the tax association, collectors of Jefferson and Shelby County. Second reading and consideration for adoption is on Monday, fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen.
Mr. Lopez, instead of asking you to get up, I'm just, since I've done this about thirteen other times, this is just for the renewal of existing taxes. There's nothing new. This is an annual vote that takes place every year. Any questions or comments from the council? Any from the audience? We will have the second reading and likely consideration on April fifteenth. Mr. Lyte, payment of bills.
I reviewed these bills, Mr. Smith, and I would move to be paid in full estimate.
Second.
With a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Disposed nay, the ayes have it. Now, comments or questions from the council? I would like to provide condolences for Mr. Lopez, your father.
Thank you very much.
As well as his doctor, Lopez. Anybody have anything else? Audience, anybody in the audience? Mr. Patterson?
My lady Joey Patterson. Sheer mark sixty years for being here in Hoover. And I love the city. Tonight, I want to thank you for the way our city responded and handled every issue with the Galleria incident. From the first day of response, and each and every day afterward, excellent job. Thank you.
Anything else in the audience? Hearing and seeing them as mayor, anything? Nope. As mentioned, Mr. Main's going to be having a committee meeting, probably starting in about three minutes.[1797.33]